Six o'clock, and the board president will call this meeting. I want to welcome everyone that's here tonight, and I think most of you will have a chance to introduce yourself here after long. So we'll go ahead and with the consent agenda, you have the agenda, the minutes from the last regular session, the budget summary and the bills. Are there questions concerning anything on the consent agenda?
I thought it was worthwhile there. I called Marty today and asked him, I didn't realize that MSBA plays another role for the school district here in handling some of our, what was it?
Medicaid.
Issues there, so that one, it did pop up on the deal there, and kind of got that resolved there. I didn't realize that MSBA provided that service for the school district.
Yeah, I don't guess I'd give it, well, another valuable service.
Mm-hmm.
Any others? And a motion being ordered to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Certainly.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Moving on to administrative reports.
We have our MSBA monthly video. This one highlights the annual meeting, which we did not send any representatives to this year, but it does get a few highlights from that meeting.
Welcome to the November edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the 2025 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with Massa and Moazbo. This year's event was once again held in Kansas City. MSBA President Shelley Mantel got the conference off to a great start at the first general session. During her remarks, she stressed the importance of local school board service.
When I was a student, and even though my father was a teacher, I had no idea there was a school board in the background guiding those places of learning. The work of school board often goes unnoticed, but our work is critical to the success of our districts. As leaders in public education, it is our greatest duty to ensure that our districts have the administrative and fiscal strength to provide the best possible education to our students. It is imperative that we advocate for fair and consistent funding for our children, that we represent the people who elected us, and that we take very seriously our fiscal responsibility to our patrons.
During the third session of the conference, Missouri's 2026 Teacher of the Year, Kimberly Sixto, was recognized. She told the crowd that whether you're a teacher, an administrator, or a board member, everybody has a role to play as a champion for public education and our students.
And that every single student deserves to feel success, every single one, and they deserve to have their potential recognized. So I know when my students leave my class, that they most likely won't remember the 27 amendments that I've tried to drill into them to be ready for EOC testing. I mean, there's a hope. But I know that they will remember how I made them feel, and I want that memory to be a good one. I want it to be something that they can hold on to and say, she believed in me. So to all the school board members out here tonight, I want to say thank you. Thank you for the time you devote to our young people and to the education staff across the state. It doesn't happen without you. Thank you for working diligently to problem solve educational issues that often feel insurmountable. I know they do. Thank you for taking those late night phone calls from teachers who need help, or the parents who have concerns, and thank you for fighting for Missouri schools and for the value of our educational system. This work doesn't happen without you. It doesn't happen without all of us.
Also during the third session, Suzanne Luther of the Jefferson City School District was presented with the Paul Morris Community Service Award.
But I do want to say, I am so honored to be awarded this with this company because I feel that everybody who steps up as a school board member qualifies for this award.
And two, Republic R3 and Hazelwood were all awarded MSBA Future Builders Early Childhood Education Program of the Year awards. In addition to the outstanding general sessions, the conference featured more than 80 concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, Missouri's premier education trade show, the Education Expo, MSBA Student Showcase of Public School Programs, and much more. MSBA's Delegate Assembly also met in conjunction with the annual conference to establish the position statements that will guide advocacy work during the coming year. And finally, each year, the Missouri School Boards Association's Future Builders Foundation awards $18,500 in scholarships to students in MSBA's member districts. A winner is selected from each of the 17 MSBA regions, and one overall state winner is selected. Student nomination forms are due by December 18th. Visit the MSBA website for more details. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thank you for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in December for the next MSBA Board Report.
And we'll be talking about the scholarship later on tonight, so that's, it must be it.
All right. Now we'll go on to administrative reports.
Starting with Toby.
All right.
Toby has a presentation. If I can hang on just a second.
Finally got around to making one.
You're very great. All right. Does this run on click system? Is it just?
I don't really know.
We're gonna find out. Okay, go ahead.
I'm just gonna roll with the flow.
Yeah. You can stand up.
Yes.
No.
Yeah, come on.
All right. All right. Do you want to try and click it?
I can click it.
See?
That's what it did.
Hey, okay. All right. Yeah, you can skip past that. Just trying to make it look fancy.
It looks good.
Okay, so in the elementary, I went over and spoke to about, I think it was four or five pretty quiet elementary kids, and they had told me, then Mr. Rogers, Mr. Rogers was the main speaker, of course, because they were pretty quiet. But they are still working on flag etiquette, which is really good, and I think that's great. They switch their group about every six weeks. They put it up in the morning, they take it down right after school, just continue teaching them everything about the flag, the red, white, and blue, you know. And then they had some star projects going on in the elementary, which was Clogging and a book club put on by Sadie Parsons and Alyssa Henry, which I think they really enjoyed them. Our club and the STEM club started up. They didn't give me a whole lot of information, but they were pretty excited about the STEM club. And Dear Season, they have an entire trophy wall dedicated to all their bucks, their does, they're all proud of. It's by Mr. Rogers' door, I'm sure you could swing by and see how big that is, they're all proud of it. They're doing a Christmas night on December 2nd, and they were really excited about their four squares. Their four squares back, they redid the blacktop, so they finally got their four squares back so they could play again. Middle school, so they're doing, this is mostly just leadership team in the middle school that they had given me, they're doing Thanksgiving food baskets. The social with no name, they were very concerned on what to call the social this year because they could not find a day after school with nothing going on to put the social on that night. So it landed on a girls' basketball game, and it's right before. So they don't know what to call it, or what's happening in any of the news. they could not find a day after school with nothing going on to put the social on that night. So it landed on a girls' basketball game, and it's right before. So they don't know what to call it or what, what's happening in any of the news. They had an encounter night, I think it was last Saturday?
It was Saturday.
Yeah. Last Saturday, Saturday. It was a youth night down at the, it was down at Mumford, wasn't it?
No, it was at Grimes.
Grimes. That's what it was. It was down at Grimes. The SEA put this on with the help of Ms. Drake and her daughter. Ms. Drake's daughter had spoke the message, and it was just a good Christian, Christian night. And they, when I had visited today, the leisure, the leadership team was doing some birthday basketball and cheer signs that they color, they decorate for these sports teams and their birthdays. And they just go around and they put them on their, on those students' lockers, just for a cute little activity to do. And the high school, I was talking to a junior today, and she was so excited about the ASBO testing tomorrow. So tomorrow, the juniors are going through ASBO testing. Tomorrow, we're doing the NHS inductions, so come on down and see if that'll be fun. I get to play with fire, so that'll be fun. They are doing job shadowing currently. Our senior projects are well underway, and the research paper is slowly going. And anything else in the high school? The FBLA went to Silver Dollar City today, I don't know how they did that, I'm sure that was freezing cold. Choir SEAs are next Thursday, SEC La Starbra, good plans, I can't talk. Star projects are going on. Avery and Janessa are selling Build-A-Bears for Christmas, and basketball has started, basketball is going on, and Gatorade scrimmage is on Wednesday, I'm probably working that. So band and choir concerts are coming up, and then Bears for a Better Christmases coming. I think that's all I got.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right. Who are we going to?
We got high school. All right. Toby gave you a lot of the things that we're doing. Tomorrow, we got the Veterans Assembly at nine o'clock, if you want to come by, that's a star project from Marcus King, we'll be doing that, I think all those other things she mentioned. Things that we've done recently, juniors did mock interviews, giving them practice on what a job interview might be like, they get feedback and go through that process. We had our student-led conferences, we had our Merritt Madness, which was for students who had 90% of attendance through a certain time period, and I think the students enjoyed that. FFA went to National Convention, we had our Fall Film Festival, and junior job shadowing at the end of last week, so they can go out and experience a career that they might want to go into and see what it's like. We also had some students with Beta Club, that they brought in toys for the Baba family, which is a highway patrol officer who was killed several years back, and so they brought those in, and Highway Patrol came and picked those up, and they will be distributed to some of the hospitals, including I think St. Louis, Kansas City, and other places around the state. So another service-type project that they were doing there. We're kind of in a slow, if there is a slow time, this is one of our slow times, the fall sports being done, waiting for basketball to start, some club activities, but not a whole lot going on, so it's a little bit of a slow time right now. So that's all I've got. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So we've been busy at the, at the middle school, we've had a lot going on the last couple of weeks, but like Mr. Schmidt just said, we are kind of hitting just a little bit of a lull here before we pick back up with winter sports and basketball. So on the third, we had our PD Day, that went really well, and we're starting, the middle school girls actually have their first basketball game tonight, so the eighth grade, I heard, did lose their first game unfortunately, but I think the seventh grade's probably getting ready to start right now, they're probably playing right now. So first games, boys are at Houston tomorrow, Houston, yeah, in a tournament tomorrow, so they get things kicked off tomorrow. On the 13th, we have the CSIP review and Bear Council meeting in here at five o'clock, and then on the fifth, we do have the middle school social, we're having to do that a little bit different this year, we're always looking for creative ways to, to maybe do something a little bit different. We got to thinking and we thought, you know, it'd be nice for all of the kids, we want all the kids to be there if they can. So we've created an event where those kids can stay after school, they won't have to ride the bus home. Now, I know some of them want to get dressed up and do all that for the, for the socials, but they'll actually stay after school, we'll supervise them, we'll have our dance, or they can play, do their thing at the social, and then the plan is, is to get them to go to that, that game following that. So we have a girls' basketball game, so hopefully the attendance, the attendance is, is up at the, at the basketball game. So that's kind of the plan with the, with the middle school social. Some celebrations, also some events, but I kind of wanted to put them over in the celebration side of things. Well, let me, let me back up before I get there, I just realized I skipped the attendance piece. Our attendance is holding steady, we've actually had a few kids enroll, I think in the last week, we've had three in the middle school, or four enroll. So, so we're, we're hanging steady with our attendance before I forget that. Onto the celebrations. We had our Character Trade Assembly on the 21st. The 22nd, we had our Bear Mania, and that's where we broke our kids up into teams, and then they, they elected to make their own team flag, so we have kids from every grade level, I think, how many teams do we have? There's like 13? 15 teams? Okay, I knew there was, there were several teams. We have kids from every grade level on a, on teams, and so they will be competing throughout the year, they're earning points, competing against one another, they had several competitions on that day, and got nothing but positive feedback from that, those kids, I heard, I heard things, there were, there were kids that, that got to showcase some of their talents that might not ordinarily have gotten to do that, and so it was really nice to see that take place. But it was, I think the kids really enjoyed it, I'm not sure exactly about the teachers. No, I think, I think they enjoyed it as well. It was a very, very busy day, and it took a lot of planning and a lot on their part, so I'm very grateful to those, those that took part in that and had a, played a big hand in that. Parent-teacher conferences were very well attended, we had our student leaders heavily involved there, they served cookies and ice cream at the middle school, and we had a great turnout, teachers did a great job contacting parents and making sure that they contacted every parent. So then we celebrated Red Ribbon Week, Ms. Henry always does a nice job with that, having, having stuff planned every day. And then on the 31st, we had our quarterly rewards for the kids, we do that every quarter, we try to reward them. And then coming up tomorrow, Veterans Day, and then the 18th, Mo Beef Days, there'll be a presentation during lunch that day, FFA will be involved with that, and then coming up, Christmas, Christmas break. So, and I already mentioned the socials, so I didn't realize I had that on there plus. A couple of other things that I want to mention, we did finish up our fall sports, we had several fall sports teams that did very well, and so a couple of teams that I want to mention, our chess team, they are very, very, very competitive, and they bring home a trophy every time they go somewhere. So good job to the chess team. The middle school girls cross-country team actually got first place in the conference, so that was, that was very good, they did a very good job this year. And then football teams were both very competitive, the seventh grade football season, although they did tie one game, I guess technically you could say that they were undefeated. And I, I still am not sure about the whole tie thing, I don't know when that became a thing, but it did happen, so. And then we received some of our MAP data, and I think Mr. Wagner is going to talk more about that, just our MAP proficiency rates versus the state average, and we continue to make strides in the right direction, I feel like, with that. And so I'm not going to get into all the details of that, I'll leave that up to Mr. Wagner. And then the kids are shopping in the bear store, we have it up and going, and that's another student leadership deal, it's really nice to see the kids earn points and be able to shop there in the bear store. So that's some of the stuff that we have going on at the middle school. Does anybody have any questions?
Perfect.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
All right. Elementary is, is busy right now, the fall concert is happening in the gym at this moment, and if you've never been to an elementary fall concert, then you really need to attend at some point. It's a combination of Thanksgiving Day and Veterans Day, and it's just, it's a good time. And I know the kids are excited about doing that tonight, but that's where our elementary administrators are at. Their enrollment, as you see, is, is holding steady. They had preschool and kindergarten vision screening, or they've got that coming up on November 12th, mid-quarter is November 14th, and the second round of I-RAY is coming up later this month, as well as dyslexia screening. Mr. Rogers included his percentages for parent-teacher conferences and their participation in that, which is, that's always encouraging to see our parents coming out to those conferences, and, and they certainly did in the elementary. In fact, first grade had 100% participation, so that's phenomenal.
Huge.
93% in kindergarten, 94 in second grade, 86 in third grade, 95 in fourth grade, so really well done by our elementary staff, making sure those parents are, are coming in for those conferences. They had a day today on November 3rd, in order to update their intervention groups, it's a big part of what they do in the elementary, and then they honored Ms. Tiffany Green, she was the local McDonald's Educator of the Year. They take nominations for that, I think, year-round at McDonald's, and then the Screen was the recipient of that award this year, so congratulations to our art teacher, Ms. Green. And there's your elementary. Mrs. Medina?
Just kind of update you a little bit on our numbers, we're up to 168 special education students in the district. We had two new ones enrolled today and start, on the other hand, we had one leave, so in and out, it's not, pretty usual. We had 11 new referrals for special education during parent-teacher conferences, we had four new referrals for 504 during parent-teacher conferences, so that leaves us with a total of 45 504s at this time. The other thing I want to tend you in with the ministry reports, you should have got a copy of this, hopefully. Just a follow-up, you had approved a couple months ago that we could start a self-contained classroom, just some updates and some things, just kind of how to maybe save some additional money, do it with one staff instead of two, kind of just what's best for our students and how we can save some money, and using that individual maybe as a long-term sub, and kind of demonstrate that it is actually saving money before we go full-blown and hire a certified teacher. I think that's all I had, unless someone had some questions or?
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. So this long-term sub, if this is what we go with, will also have the pairs that we have on staff to assist, correct?
Yes, we will use pairs that are already existing.
We have four students in that class.
We'll start, and then we'll get up to that point, four or five, depending on how, how it goes, because we want to make sure that it's going well and those students are being successful before we overload them and know we're gonna kind of have it thrown in our face, because they're very high-need students.
No, that's true.
Yeah. IQs 40, 50, and less. If you think about it, 85 to 115 is the average, to kind of compare that to something you know, if you ever saw the movie The Blind Side, the young man in that show had an IQ of 80, and these kids are 40, 50, low 60 IQs, so can be very challenging.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. V. All right, we will go on with the Interact Club?
Yes, we do, that's what everybody's here to see.
You bet.
Mrs. Wiles is gonna introduce them, I'll give her the picture.
Well, I'm Mrs. Wiles, I'm Sherri Wiles, I am subbing in for Mrs. Hatch this evening, she's the actual Interact Club sponsor. She is not able to make it tonight because her son is in the, in the concert tonight in the elementary, so I'm stepping in to help her out. With the Interact Club, one thing that she likes to do is to start her meetings by having the students answer the following questions. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned?
Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned?
And they like to ask those questions so they know, am I doing this for the right reasons or not? So tonight, what I'm going to do is I'm going to have the Interact Club members go ahead and introduce themselves, and they will take over the presentation.
You start, right?
Yes. Okay, I'm Izzy Rotherback.
I'm Zoe Bryan.
I'm Anna W. Patwell.
I'm Kate N. Lees.
I'm Lacey Collins.
All right.
What did you hear it?
Oh, okay. These are all of our members for this year, and the ones that are older, obviously, like the president, secretary, and stuff.
Yes, and I think it's.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Okay. What is Interact Club? Interact Club is a rotary-sponsored service club for young people ages 12 to 18. It provides opportunities for leadership development, community service, through a culmination of school-based or community-based projects. The clubs are self-governing, self-supporting, and their main goals are to develop leadership skills, demonstrate helpfulness, and advance international understanding. Each club must complete at least two service projects a year, one for the local community and one that fosters international understanding. Okay, then the members.
This is the Fall Festival fundraiser that we did. We sold, we, we had a booth up that sold soda cans and homemade baked goods generously given by our members, and a raffle that had over $200 worth of a prize. We made over a few hundred dollars from all the sales and everything, and I'm not sure of the specific, you can ask Ms. Hatch about that, but the money helped pay for the, I think that's the next person, actually.
So we put together the homecoming dance, and $300 was donated.
A Interact Club, our Interact Club has actually decided to put together a scholarship for all of our seniors who are graduating into their post-secondary education. So far, we only have one scholarship put together, which is $250, but our main goal is to help multiple, if not all of our seniors that graduate part of the Interact Club, just to pay for their post-secondary education with what little or as much money as we can give them.
We have assisted with parking cars at the football games and also picking up trash. We set up for the Fall, Fall Festival, we cleared out munch for a mo, for a model, the senior, we do seniors enter monthly breakfast, and then we did friendly scares at the trunk
In the future, we will assist with serving Thanksgiving at Westside Church, we'll have people doing the Salvation Army bell ringing around town, we will go to munch and package groceries to provide Christmas meals, and we will do our volunteering at Ozark's Food Harvest, and we plan to donate to our international project. And this is all of our members.
Thank you for hearing our presentation about the West Plains High, or Willow Springs High School.
[laughter]
I'm sorry, I'm not from Willow.
But you are now, right?
Yes.
Proud.
It's Murray and White.
What's your international program?
We do a different one every year.
We haven't decided, we haven't decided this year. Last year, does anyone remember what we donated to?
They raised change.
Oh, change for change.
For Uganda.
Yes.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Your help at Munch was greatly appreciated. Cleaning up.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I think Mr. Lowe's gonna give us a financial update.
A little disappointed, although everyone was here to see me.
We are.
I like the "oo" that went across whenever she accidentally said West Plains. Okay, so let me tell you kind of where we're at right now. What I'm doing every day is I'm going through our current budget, which Carol Embry developed for us through working with school. And we're gonna use that, because it makes no sense to develop another budget, all right? So, I'm going through that right now. I'm trying to match up trends and numbers. I'm looking for holes in our budget. Whenever I say holes, every budget that you make is gonna have holes in that, all right? So, you can try to look through that. You gotta try to find, okay, do we budget here? Do we not budget enough here? And what I'm really working really hard with the ladies are, is getting our accounting codes in place. Whenever we charge something, whether it comes to this club, that club, or it's an expense, it's there every single year. That's how we're gonna build a budget that's sustainable moving forward. Right now, we're just kind of, if this program needs something, and they don't have the money, we're gonna pull it out and put it in there, so it's hard to track that back and forth. I'm not gonna take up a lot of time. I want you to make sure everyone opened that up and looked at the financial worksheet I gave you, correct? Every month, you're gonna have notes from me if there's something that kind of sticks out or something that you're wondering about. Mac has my phone number. If you have a question, when you get that on Thursday or Friday, don't hesitate, go ahead and give me a call and say, hey, Kelly, what's in there? Because inside of each one of those functions is about 10 different things that we pay out of, okay? So, on yours, for example, it says "school board services." That's not exactly, there's a lot of things underneath there that we pay, like MSBA, several different things. But if you see something that kind of sticks out at you that doesn't look right, please don't hesitate to give me a call, and we'll get you an answer to make sure that we're all on the same page, okay? Two things. The worksheet that I gave you, it's got functions on it. And that is going to match up. You can actually go into My Little Bears, what Andrew did for you, so the board can kind of track along. You can hit that same function. If it'll say 2541 on your worksheet that I gave you, on that spreadsheet, you can actually go in there. If you'll click on that, you can see what's coming in and out of those all at the same time, so that'll kind of help you a little bit.
I don't see it. I don't know what you're talking about. It's right here, right?
Right, that's your codes on the left. Those functions that are on the left, like 11111 is elementary expenses at the very top. Your 11111, that's your elementary expenses. That's the same thing that's on your website, that My Little Bears, that everyone can look at and match up, okay? The top of that is the revenue. On the revenues, we're gonna watch this really close each month. This is through October, by the way. Whenever we have a November board meeting, it's through October, so it gives us plenty of time to get the information to you. Whenever you look at that, I want you to really pay close attention each month where we're at with our revenues versus where we were at last year. Because our budget is based on a pretty aggressive revenue, so we want to make sure that we're trying to match up. The next thing I want you to pay attention to is those expenditures on the big, long line down through there. I hope to see a lot of red this year, because you've made a tremendous amount of cuts. And so, it's not gonna be on every function and every budget item, but we should see quite a bit of red as we're going down through there. If something is a concern to me or something catches my eye, you're gonna get a note. I'm not gonna give you 35 notes every week, because I actually want you to read them, or every month. I want you to read them. I'll pick out four or five things, and I'll say, hey, make sure you pay attention to this, or hey, this caught my attention, and then I'll make you a note, just like I did this past month, okay?
So, just so everybody understands, the red is if it's less than what it was last year, that's how much.
Absolutely. On your expenditures, on the revenues, we want to see black. Up top, we want to see black, the very top. Your 5100 is your taxes. We shouldn't see much at the very beginning. 5200 is your local, which is fines and sheets. 5300 is state money, that's formula. We actually get Prop C goes into 5100. 54 is federal, and then you have your tuition on 5800. We want to see blacks, as many blacks as we can as we move forward. Now, a budget, I will tell you this. A budget will go up and down, okay? So, we don't need jerk, we don't do anything. I'm watching this pretty much every day and doing everything to make sure that we're staying on track and matching up to that budget. If there's something that catches my attention and say, hey, I don't like this, then you're definitely gonna know about that, okay? I believe Mike will tell you, he's gotten tens of thousands of texts and emails from me already, trying to keep him up to date on what's going on.
And I have to ask him, okay, now, what does that mean?
Yeah, I would try, yeah.
He clarifies it very well, and yeah, it's very helpful.
Yeah, don't hesitate to come up there. I'm just above Mandy, upstairs by the server, I guess, Andrew, upstairs. Just come up the stairs. Anytime I'm there, usually Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and sometimes Thursday and Friday. But still, I'm there. Come up there, and anytime you want to go over budget or you want to talk about things, come up there. I'll simplify it for you and try to make it make as much sense as possible, okay?
You want to address just briefly about November being our lowest, you know, point because of when our revenues come in?
Yes, November is, for everyone, for the most part, is your lowest month. Whenever you do a cash flow plan, most people, you don't really need to go past December, because what starts happening in December, in January? Yeah, we start getting taxes. So, we'll start getting our local taxes in. Last year, we received about, I looked at it today, it was about $532,000 in December. And then, the rest of them will start coming in, our big chunks will start coming in in January and February. But just about every school district, they're a low month, because they're gonna go from July all the way through November, basically paying with their state money and everything that's coming in, what they had in reserve. So, November is always going to be your low month. December will start climbing out of it. I actually did a cash flow today, and you can kind of see it, where it's, we'll start climbing out. It goes in July, you're usually good. And then, starting revenues versus expenditures in September, October, November, it starts going negative. Not just for this district, for every district, because you'll get those local taxes in until December or January.
Are we looking at having to do a tax investigation?
Not right now, not right now. It's, we're fine right now, we're close. I think today, without our outstanding bills, I looked at it today, we were a little over a million. But remember, we've got payroll coming on the 20th. On the 21st is a Marty. But that same day, we're also gonna get a state check in. Our state check will come into us. So, right now, we are running, if we can make it through December, and then we can start getting those local taxes to come in, I feel much, much better, okay? But I actually thought we might need one in November, because this is the low month. We've cut down spending last month. September, our bills, our outgoing bills were like $400,000. This month, they were $319,000. So, as we go forward in the year, especially once we hit January and February, I have always done this, I'll put a death squeeze on that thing. That's just how we, that's how we're gonna have to manage moving forward.
Do I have a question? Is that okay?
No, sorry. We just don't open the floor for questions. If you have a comment after we get to the end of the agenda and the opportunity for comments, but you're free to come in and talk to Dr. Spence, or call me, or whatever. But yeah, sorry. All right. Any questions from the board?
Each month, keep your eye on that sheet that I give you, because whenever we get to March and April, there should not be any surprises. You should be able to track that along with me compared to last year. We should have a pretty decent idea where we're going to end up.
And what Andrew has provided, this also gives us a good...
Absolutely. Kind of gives you a little bit more incentive on that.
In line, yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. You're up. High school?
Yep.
For each of them?
That's us.
All right, Mrs. Wilson, you may just, if I could pull this up.
Okay.
This is not a touch room. Okay, so we are here. We want to inform you of a curriculum change we're going to be making next year. So, we are going to be implementing a new project called Career Action Plans. We are going to be using this project to replace senior projects. And this, these are our reasons why senior projects feel very dated. The CAPS or the Career Action Plans provide flexibility for students. They're individualized for students. And they provide the opportunity for students to gain real-world experience and interact with potential employers. Basically, the world that we're preparing students for is continually evolving. We are preparing students for jobs that have not been created yet, and we want to make sure that we are giving them the best start that we can. And we feel like this project is going to help them do that.
So, there are a couple similarities between this new plan and the senior projects. It's still a culmination of their education, so it still takes part in their senior English class. And it's still individualized. We want them to have the freedom to choose what path they want to go down and what they want to see. With that comes the differences. Speech will not be a required course. We don't want to focus so much on the project and the, like, speech that they do, the senior project night. We want it to be focused on their learning and just getting them ready for a career. A lot of our students are already doing something like this, such as with VOTEC or their internships, so we want to just kind of continue on with that track. Because there won't be a senior project night, there's no judges necessarily. We still want to invite the community to come in when the kids do present, but it's more to promote the kids for, like, to future employers and such. And the grades come straight from the teacher instead of the judges, and there's no ranks with this.
So, logistically, how this looks before we get into the nitty-gritty of the project. Basically, any professional career certification or course they're in will count toward this CAPS or this Career Action Plan project. So, if they are getting a welding certification or they're obtaining their nursing certification, or they are working to get a CDL or anything else our students might be working toward career-wise, that will count. They may, so with not requiring the speech course, that's going to give them an extra block in the day, an extra course. So, they can schedule an internship block in their schedule, where they leave school and they go to a local business or to, you know, whatever they're choosing to do, to a non-for-profit organization, where they do this as a scheduled class, so it should not be outside of school unless they choose to do that. Now, that being said, we always have, you know, our top few students that want to take every dual-enroll class that we offer. So, they will have the option to do this this summer before their senior year, if they choose. But that is not at all a requirement.
And because we want to give them that opportunity to start early, this project will actually start in their junior English class now. So, we already do the career unit, where they do their mock interviews, their job shadowing, they create a resume, we go over cover letters, all that fun stuff. So, after that, we'll talk about, you know, the CAPS, give them all the information, and they can kind of start planning what path they want to go down. When we come back in January is when they'll start working on their proposals and getting those approved. And that's just in time to start scheduling their senior year, their classes. So, if they choose to do that internship block, they can go ahead and schedule that in for the next year. And then, that fourth quarter is just making the contacts, you know, calling people in the community, getting their mentor, and getting everything set up for that next year or for the summer.
So, the timeline in their senior year, that first semester, they'll be completing the project, the hours, the class, whatever they're doing, the learning, their VOTEC. They're also writing a paper. And a lot of people like to think that the research paper is the senior project. However, every English course requires a research paper. So, whether we have a project or not, they're still going to be writing a research paper. This just allows them to choose a topic they're interested in, rather than me choosing a topic they may not be interested in. So, they'll write their paper, and that happens in my class. And I tell them, as long as you come to class and you work while you're here, you're not gonna have to do this for homework. They will create their presentations in English, and it will be an in-class presentation. They, I don't know if you guys remember when you, you know, worked on the Bear Necessities, the portrait of a graduate? So, everything they do in this project is going to connect to those learning outcomes that we want our graduates from Willow Springs to be able to do. And they will connect that. They will do their presentations during the day. However, and I think Megan mentioned this, they can invite their family and friends if they choose. And we really want to focus on not bringing community judges, but maybe bringing target audiences. So, you know, we might have a student who is, really wants to pursue a career in welding, and they've done a great job with the project. Maybe we want to invite some business owners from some of the industry in town to come and see this kid, so we can get them in front of some people and maybe create some relationships, job opportunity type thing. Okay, so, all that being said, we have five different paths a student can choose. And we're gonna just give you the highlights of every path. Now, every path is going to require 40 hours. Obviously, if they choose to schedule this as an internship, they will, by the end of even one semester, they will have well over 40 hours. But we had to put a number on it for, like, if a kid chooses to do it during the summer. So, it's one week of an internship, basically. So, our first path is an entrepreneurship path. We actually have several students, believe it or not, in past and present, who are starting their own businesses. And so, this would be for a student who's looking to be an entrepreneur, who maybe has a business idea, and they want to do something with that. So, they would choose somebody who knows about operating a business. They would go and spend time with that person, get some advice, learn the ins and outs, develop a business plan, and then, obviously, connect their learning to the bare necessities.
Connect with the community, this is more for our students who want to give back to their school, their community, they're more service-minded. We have a lot of nonprofit organizations just in the area that they could connect with, see how those nonprofits work, see how they run, see what it takes to actually, you know, plan a project and all that. So, then the kids could create their own service project for the community, or they could join that nonprofit in something that they've already got going on.
The Show What You Know path would be probably what you would think feels like the most like a traditional senior project. However, it's very different. This really focuses on a skill. So, maybe we have a student that says, you know what? I want to learn woodworking. I want to learn how to make cabinets. Or, I want to be a seamstress, you know? I want to make my own prom dress. So, this allows the student to learn a skill like that, but rather than focusing on, okay, you are gonna build this piece of furniture, and you're gonna have to have $300 worth of material, it focuses on the skills they learn, not the, what they make. So, maybe they learn some different techniques for joining lumber. Maybe they learn different finishing techniques. Maybe they learn how to make a raised panel cabinet door. And they make a portfolio and video showing these skills that they've obtained from this project. Or maybe they learn how to hem pants, and they learn how to tailor a dress, and they learn how to, you know, take something in. They just create a portfolio showing these skills that they've learned from their mentor and how that can benefit them. Obviously, we're still gonna connect to the bare necessities, and that's going to be something that they can use as they move forward in their future.
The next path is an internship, which we already have a program for this, so it's just a continuation. And this is for students who want, you know, those career development skills in a certain business. But maybe they don't necessarily want to start their own business, like the entrepreneurship. So, this is just them getting the experience and working with someone who knows what they're doing, okay?
And then, the last one would be the industry-recognized credentials. And I think I started with this a little bit, but these are our students who are obtaining some kind of certification that's going to allow them to move into the workforce seamlessly. You know, I see, I have several of our girls that are in the nursing program that, upon graduation,[1770.01] graduation, they'll go for another semester and then they'll have their LPN certification and that is pretty rigorous, so it really, you know, that course counts. Or if they are in welding or if they're obtaining some kind of certification that can help them in a career in the future, you know, they're already doing that, but that will count for their cap project and then they'll write about things in that career path and kind of gives them a head start for their future. That's weird capitalization.
This is the English department?
Yes.
My question is on internship, is, is that something that they're going to have to, do they do that for a semester, their whole senior year, or like if they're trying to tie it to this, this program or how does that, what does that look like?
That would be up to them. They would need to do it for at least a semester, but depending on the flexibility in their schedules, the electives they want to take, they could do it for-
So they would take that as an, as an elect-
They would be required 40 hours, is what we have for them.
Right, yes. So they would be required one semester if they schedule it in their schedule.
But they would do more in that internship?
They could. You know, a semester would take care of it, but if they want to do it a year, there's no problem with-
Would they get the 40 hours in the semester?
Yeah, you can get 40 hours in a semester, yes.
They can go in on weekends, whatever it takes.
If they want, yeah.
When you say block, that's the 90-minute block.
But yeah, if they schedule it in their schedule, they would go every other day for 90 minutes and in a semester, they would easily get 40 hours.
And again, that's one of those things, they could do an internship during the summer if they chose to.
Is there any internship that we just could not allow or is there some stipulations to that or?
So, I think there would be requirements there, depending on what their career-
Yeah, we really want to focus on something that's going to be a career. So not ju, you know, I work this nine-to-five job to make money to pay for my car insurance, but it's not what I want to do for the rest of my life, it's what I do right now in high school. We don't want them just to go to their job, we want them to go learn a career that, hey, I do want to do this for the next 40 years until I retire. But other than that, we want them to have a mentor who is knowledgeable, successful in the field and can help them learn things to be successful.
So is it, so they don't have to take the speech block, right? So they would be able to use that block? Is that at the end of the day?
Not necessarily.
Could be, so that's the only thing that I would be, like as some of the employees, high school kids, you know, 90 minutes in the middle of the day, they jump in, if it was at the last, if there was some way for it to be at the last block, they could come in and they'd continue to work.
So, most of our internships are at the end of the day and, and we allow them up to two blocks if it fits and they can do one or two. Last, one block every day or two blocks every other day where they've got more time. End of the block or end of the day allows them to continue even on after school is out.
That's what I'm saying, as an employer, it'd be tough at 10 o'clock in the morning to have a kid come in and not for 90 minutes.
Occasionally, we have one first block where they go to work before school starts and go into first block and then come to school. So there's, there's flexibility.
With the school district done at the end of the day.
And there's no problem with them being compensated, correct?
Correct.
One of the things I've always been impressed with, with senior projects is their presentation skills. And I'm assuming that they would still be learning how to present-
Absolutely.
-in front of an audience.
Absolutely.
Like they did do, because that, that is always impressive, how well they do.
We really want to tailor their presentations toward the career that they're seeking. So a presentation for somebody who is going to trade school or directly into the workforce is going to look much different than a student who may be going to, straight to a four-year university and we just want to set everybody up to succeed in their career path or the education experience they're choosing.
And it could be just as beneficial too if they work in a field and realize this is not what I want to do.
Correct. Exactly, yes. Because we've had a few do that.
And that's why we, the idea is not to have judges, but to specifically invite people from the community that would have some connection to that type of project. Because there's more connections that could be made, hey, that's somebody we could use over here. Because we, we have that.
And we'll use it as a job interview.
Yes.
And that's why, you know, we'll start, she'll start with the mock interviews and it'll, it should just flow smoothly, it should all go together.
Is this, sorry, I didn't mean to-
No, you're fine.
Is this going to take some of the stigma away from the senior projects? There's, there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of, you know, kids dreading this thing, you know, it's this big overwhelming thing.
Yeah, and you know, at the end of senior projects, every year I give them a survey and they always write, it's not near as sad as everybody made it out to be.
Well, that's what I'm wondering about this, if this is going to kind of-
We hope it does.
I think it will, I've been around senior projects since their inception and I do think it will. This is the natural evolution. Senior project, and I'm, I'm a huge fan, passionate about the benefits of senior project, but this is a, this is a natural evolution of keeping up with, with what, like these ladies have said, yeah. And I'm really proud of our high school for being proactive and seeing that, okay, this need, we need to adjust to this, not throwing it all out, but just reimagining what it can be.
Well, they have a community night where the community can go and see what projects, what cap project they've done.
At this point, we had gone away from that because of the negative, but we've talked about that, we've talked about including it in the community showcase, so.
And it would be an optional thing, if the kids want to be there and show off, then they can, show off their skills.
And that community showcase is early March, I can't remember the date offhand when that will be. It's typically between basketball and spring sports is when we try to fit that in.
So that showcase could align with-
Yes. And the hope would be by, you know, grouping as they present, we'll probably group them, you know, like of all, you know, each type of project, so we can invite people that would be beneficial for them to see, so.
I think you got attention of, but they'd be done by-
Yes.
Like March and for a senior, that's very beneficial because that allows them that time at the end of the year to-
Right, and senior projects go up until the week before graduation and that is stressful for students and for us, but our goal would be to be done by the beginning of fourth quarter so they can focus on the scholarship things, getting everything finished up and then graduation.
One of the greatest benefits I saw too from senior projects was the pride that these students felt after making it through it. And, but I feel like that will also be a product of this, that they will have an opportunity to, to enjoy success and, and experience that.
And we hope feel, gain some skills that make them feel prepared and ready for the next step. Because seniors that know what they're doing next year, that's always good, but the ones who have no idea about March, their life isn't always super fun, so we're hoping that that can give them some direction.
I appreciate all the time and effort you all put into this. A lot of work.
This is work and I appreciate it.
The forward thinking that you provided here.
Well, those two are the, we, we asked them to do something and they did it and came back and said, okay, here's what we got, so.
I'm sure it will evolve as the time passes.
Yeah, and we'll work the kinks out next year.
Yeah, exactly.
Hopefully, good things to come.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're ready for your policy update and I, you'll notice I skipped the video. I put that video on the last two or three bear reports and if you wanted to watch it, I'm hopeful that you did watch it and it's about 15 minutes. If you do want to watch it, I am open to showing that to you here, but if not, I'm going to run through a brief summary of these and feel free to, to ask questions and we can talk about it, but I'm just going to kind of give you the highlights of, of all of these documents. EHVD, that would be an AI update and it updates to more general language, so it allows, it still allows districts to develop their local plan for specific AI use plans, they call them, but that was just kind of a, they dropped some of the specific language and made it a little more general so that local districts can do more with it because AI stuff is changing all the time. And at some point, I'll have Andrew come and we'll, we'll look at upping or redoing RAI use policy, but that's just on the MSBA level, this one is. GCPA, that is clarity and alignment for staff reduction. It doesn't really change anything as far as what we can do and cannot do for staff reduction, it just clarifies and aligns some things with, with state statutes, so nothing major there. IGBA, that's special education. It allows students identified as young child with developmental delay. YCD, you've probably heard that acronym among hundreds of other acronyms, acronyms of public education, to continue under that identification until age seven. So we can keep a child on that diagnosis until seven and then a more proper identification would need to be made. That's just, Medina can step in if I'm overstepping, but like a lot of times you can't identify a young child because they can't, a lot of times they're non-verbal, they have other issues and it's just hard to figure out what, you know something's there, but not sure what it is yet, so we can now keep them as YCDV until age seven. Anything else you want to add on that?
No, and, and it's really beneficial because there's a high percentage of students who qualify at preschool level and we have to have them retested by the time they, or before the, end of their kindergarten year, there's a high percentage of those students who do not qualify, so then there's a gap of a year and a half to two years before second grade when they do qualify, so be able to keep them in there is definitely going to help every individual student.
Yeah, that's a really good thing in helping kids, is what it is. JEC requires districts to request additional educational and discipline records to enroll a student. So what this does is require students to, or schools to make sure that if there's a behavioral threat assessment, if there's a personal safety plan on a student that we have enrolling, we need to make sure that we are doing our part to get that information as a district so that we know, hey, this kiddo's coming to us with some prior stuff that, that we need to be aware of. JECA allows districts to enroll a child, enroll a child of a non-resident contracted employee. So we have always been allowed to allow a contracted employee to bring their, their child with them to our district without charging them tuition. This just broadens that to where if we have somebody that is under contract with us, that they can bring their child as well. And we, that's like bus drivers, food service, like and we've always done that, but MSBA just makes that a little more specific to where we can. So unless the board decides they don't want to do that, we would go ahead and adopt this policy, but that's what we've always done and I really don't see much, if any, negatives of, of not allowing that. JFCA is student dress code, it's not a dress code, but it's a policy that outlines goals and assigns development of dress code to it. So basically all it does is say, you need to have dress code and it needs to come from your administration. And in that dress code, there was some new legislation called Missouri Crown Act, which prohibits discrimination against any person based on hairstyle if the hairstyle is commonly associated with a particular racial group, ancestral origin, or ethnicity. So basically, we cannot tell a student that they need to get a haircut if their hair is associated with their ancestry. Correct. Basically, we can't tell kids to get a haircut. Sorry, Coach Call.
Unless they're on sports day.
Well, we're not going to get into that. JFCJ, weapons in school, districts will report to DESI the number of credible safety threats during the year and we already do a lot of that reporting, but it just outlines that we really do have to do that. And those are, the key word there is credible. Any kind of safety threat, we have to report back to DESI. JG is student discipline. Senate Bill 68 disallows any zero tolerance disciplinary policies in name and in practice. We don't have any, so that's, that's not a problem. JGF, discipline reporting and records updated to more concise language, again to match Senate Bill, Senate Bill 68, there was a lot of school safety stuff in Senate Bill 68 and I'm on the committee that, that meets in Jeff City, the governor's committee to, to check on behavioral threat assessments in our school safety, so we'll continue to work out. Senate Bill 68's got a lot in it. Part of that is JHDE, which is behavioral threat assessment. So Senate Bill 68 requires that all districts adopt that and again, I don't want to give too much credit to Glenn Moore, but we've been on the forefront of, of this kind of activity for a long time. We've had a behavioral threat assessment team for as long as I can remember and it's now finally become best practice in Missouri. Every district is required to have that now and we've had it for a long time, so our district is, is doing good things in, in school safety. Language has been revived in that bill to include threat. It was behavioral assessment and legislators require that the word threat be back in there. JHDF is suicide awareness, basically including a personal safety plan for the above assess. So if you're doing an assessment, you need to, if it's suicidal, there needs to be a safety plan included for that student. And then the last one, JHG is reporting abuse and this aligns with House Bill 737, which updates the definition of neglect to exclude, so it's leaving out as the sole fact that a person allows a child to engage in independent activities without adult supervision, including traveling to school, playing outdoors, or remaining at home for a reasonable period of time. Basically, what they had people doing was calling in, saying, I want to report abuse because this family is letting their kid walk to school unsupervised. And so now this will say, you can't do that. That can't be the sole reason that you're calling to report abuse. If there's other reasons, obviously they're going to take that. So, that is the quick version of the policy update. If you'd like the 15-minute version, I can show you that as well.
On the weapons thing, they made a big deal about saying in there that a pocket knife is going to be considered as a reason to be spelled, right?
Yeah, and it's, there's some, yeah.
Whereas I think before that if it had to be sold, the blade had to be like longer four inches or something for it's considered, but they're making a-
And we've always, and we've always had to report that, that if, if there is a knife and a weapon found, we still had to report that to DESI.
Do we always report a pocket knife?
No, we have not.
I mean, according to this, we'll have to report that, right?
We will have to, yes. Any other questions?
Any other questions about? Time for Mr. Wagner. All right, well, I have three things on the agenda on, it looks like I have two items, but it's actually three things. The first, one, one thing that, yeah, surprise, that, one thing is the comprehensive, or I'm sorry, the Continuous School Improvement Plan. This is, this is a plan that, this particular plan, it's a current rendition of it, we developed during the 2223 school year, intended to be a four-year plan, so we're coming up on the end of this plan and I just need the board to renew this for one more year and, but it spells out the goals of our district. As a matter of fact, the plan that you usually have on your table, yeah, that is, those are the goals of our CSIP plan and-
You waited until you were up there.
Thank you, thank you. And so, so anyway, that's, that's what we're asking, this is the document that we're asking you to approve tonight, it is in your, I believe it's in your packet and, but one thing I do want to promote is Thursday night, Dr. Johnson talked about that a while ago, is the, Dr. Spitz's Bear Committee is-
Bear Council.
Council, sorry, Bear Council, I had the right acronym, but just wrong words. Bear Council is, I'm going to meet with them on Thursday, I'm going to have three members of our Professional Development Committee come and we're going to go, we're going to look over some of the data related to the goals in this plan and, and try to work toward developing the newer, a newer version of this plan or more up-to-date version of this plan. So, so I'm just asking for approval for one more year of this and then maybe next year we start, you start seeing a different version of this plan. But tonight, but anyway, Thursday night, we're going to go over those goals and any of you guys, we're meeting at 5:00 in here and if any of y'all who want to be a part of that meeting and provide some input and see the data that goes along with it, that's, that'd be, you're more than welcome to come and, come in and attend. But one thing that we are going to go over, one goal that we are going to talk about tonight is goal one, develop and enhance quality educational instructional programs to improve performance and enable students to meet their personal academic and career goals. One of the things that we are going to look at tonight is going to be performance data on the MAP test, okay? That, we want, one of our, one of our objectives within that goal is to meet or exceed the state average for subgroups and see continuous growth for all of our- state average for subgroups and see continuous growth for all of our students on the, on the MAP test. So I'll show you some of that data tonight. That's going to be rolled into our annual performance report data. Now, our annual performance report is, is released by DESI every year. This is about the earliest that we've had it in many years. I think last time, last year I reported in December or January, and so to be able to report this in November has, has been great. It allows us to make, make goals to our plan a little bit sooner each year, go over data a little bit sooner in the year and help us to, help us to make, take action on, on our performance. Okay? So, and I'm going to go over, go over some of the details here later on, but if you, this year, our annual performance report, we received, we've received 84.6% of our total points, okay? The APR is divided into two sections, performance, that's our MAP and E O C data, and then as well as continuous improvement, our, the development of our C S I P plan is a big chunk of the 59 points, I'm sorry, of six, of the 60 points for continuous improvement, okay? And we will be reevaluated on that this, this year. We're providing, we're providing this document that you approved tonight as well as other documentation on how we are, how we are developing and, and using this as a living document, okay? So I'll talk more about that here in a minute, but we did receive almost all of our points in continuous improvement. We received 78% of our points in, in academic achievement or in, I'm sorry, in performance. But if you look at what we did in 2024, we were at 79%, so we're up five and a half percent over what we were last year. In 2023, we were at 83%, almost 84%, and so we, we've beat the last two years. In 2022, the first year they released this rendition of, of the APR, we were about 85% I believe. So if you, what determines our accreditation is, is the composite score. This is, this is the average of, basically an average score of all of these points for the last three years. We were at 83% for a year, for a composite score for years 2023 to 2025. We were down a little bit from 20, from our 2022 to 2024 because remember a while ago, I said 2022 was just a little bit higher, okay? Where do we rank? How do we compare to other schools? They just released this on Thursday, so this is relatively new data. If you look at all the S C A schools, we were number two in the conference behind Houston. You can, and you can see where all the other schools in the S C A were. And then I put some other schools out to the side here. One of the most improved school districts, and they were very proud of this on their Facebook page this weekend, was Gainesville. They were at 90.8% and they, they have tremendously improved their academic achievement. And so that may, that's one school I'm very interested to ask what, what was the difference between 2024 and 2025? So you could see, you could see where we, you can see many of the schools out to the side here were higher than we were, but for us to say, hey, we beat Springfield, the biggest school district in the state, then that was, I feel, I feel like that that's a, that's a, a good achievement, okay? The ones that we expect to be up there like NIXA, for example, they're, they're always at that high. And so, so it was, it was, I thought it was very refreshing to see this data compared to other schools. I would love to be up here in this range a little bit more, but, but compared to, compared to where we've been in the last four years, I, I like the 84.6, where we're at this year. I want, I want to be better though. Don't get me wrong.
Where's you at the 84.6 at, man? That's, that's what they give you?
Yes, that's, that was this number up here.
Oh, that's the number there?
Yes, yes. Yeah, not the composite scores, which is, I was, this is just 2025 data, what, what we did in the last school year. Okay, so I mentioned there are two different groups, or two different categories in which you're scored. The first one is performance, academic achievement being the, the big one. This is, this is, these are our scores on the MAP and the E O Cs for all of our students, okay? We are tested in English Language Arts, grades three through eight, and then, and then in English Two for 10th grade. Math, we are tested in grades three through eight, Algebra One, and then our 10th graders in Algebra Two. And the reason we, we test those students in particular is because they have to have an E O C taken in high school, or math E O C in high school. They're, those are the same students that are taking Algebra One in eighth grade, okay? And they take the E O C for Algebra One in eighth grade. Science, we tested grades five, eight, and then Biology, that's our junior year. And then Social Studies, the lone test is American Government. We do not test in middle school or elementary in Social Studies. It's just one, one, one shot, one group of kids. We do get, we do have less points possible for Social Studies because it is such, it is such a narrow, narrow subject area that is tested. We are also scored on student group achievement. These used, this used to be subgroups or super subgroup is what, what they called it in NSC Five, but basically this is black Hispanic students with free and reduced lunch that comes through direct certification. And that's, in other words, they have SNAP benefits and maybe in the foster care system, TANF benefits as well. Students with disabilities and then, and then our English learner population, okay? And those are the students that are receiving English language services.
Do all the other districts, is that standardized?
Yes, yes, yeah. Every, 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 every school in this, school district in the state of Missouri is graded on.
Same class, the same ages.
Yes, yes. K eights have a little bit different rubric, but K, all the K 12s have this, yes. Academic growth as well, that is something that I have tried to study the math on for three years now, and I still can't wrap my head around it. And you ask anybody else that's in the same position as I am looking at the APR, they will say this, the exact same thing. The ones that do understand it are the ones that look at data every day all year. So, but anyway, our, our goal is just to see continuous improvement of our students and that's, and that's, that's the only way we could say, hey, let's, that's the only way we could say, let's, let's do better on academic growth. Let's just make our kids better. Okay? I'm going to show you, this, I'm going to be very brief with our MAP results versus the state average. I can provide a, a little bit later on, since scores weren't available till Thursday, I didn't have time to do an S C A comparison of how we did versus the rest of the conference, but on, on the MAP test. But this, this, these are, these are the four subjects that are tested, all the, all the grade levels, okay? I'm not narrowing it down to one grade level because especially in middle school and high school where you only have one teacher, I feel like that we kind of single out, single out teachers from time to time, especially on a bad year, and I don't want to, I don't want to do that here in open session, okay? So anyway, in English Language Arts, you could see we were just below the state average in ELA, and but this is the closest we've been to the state average in probably about five years. So I was very encouraged to see that. Math, we were only 2% below the state average overall in math. We have not been closer than 5% in, in the last 10 years. So I, I'm very encouraged by these two numbers. Science continues to rock. Grades five, grades, grades, grades five and eight were both above the state average and Biology One was very close. And so our overall versus the state average, they rocked it and continue to do that. We were down a little bit over the year before, but, but we were still way above the state average. And then Social Studies, you can see we were, you know, we were just American Government, we were, we were below the state average on that. We've made some, I think, I think the high school has made some adjustments to try to help work with this neck, for this coming school year, so. Once again, in high school, the juniors take Biology One, the juniors take, most of the juniors take Government. There are some seniors that take Government, those are one of the least students that are at VOTEC. English Language Arts at high school, the E O C is English Two, and then Algebra One for math. Then I talked about the, I mentioned a while ago, the performance part of it, okay? Or I'm sorry, no, I mean, this is the second part of our performance, other than academic achievement. We have, we also are graded on success-ready students. These are, this is how we score on, on the ACT, how our students score on the ACT, the ASVAB, which Toby mentioned the juniors are taking tomorrow, and then the ACT work keys, okay? This reflect, this is a reflection of the students who graduated in 2024, okay? So not last year's graduates, but the year before, okay? Because it takes, some of these, some of these scores take a little bit of time to cycle through and to give our test scores earlier. Last year, they switched to some more lagging data than, than leading data. Advanced credits, we get points based off of students who are B or higher in dual credit or dual enrollment classes. That's either on campus or students who go to Missouri State West Plains to earn a dual degree, okay? And then we have several students who get points for us through industry, industry-recognized credentials. For example, the, in ag, if they, if they score an acceptable score on, on their, on ag contests, in ag, on an ag contest, they'll receive an industry-recognized credential. Several of our students who are in carpentry or in criminal justice have already earned I R Cs, industry-recognized credentials through their programs as well. Students that are going to Southern Missouri Tech and West Plains, going to VOTEC, get those as well at the end of their senior year if they pass their, pass their credential test. Graduation rate is also factored in there, and then our 180-day follow-up of our 2024 graduates are also included on here as well, okay? So, so that's performance. The other, before I go into the other part, the continuous improvement, what does the performance data tell us? We were, we decreased, I'm sorry, performance data increased from 2024 in English Language Arts. We were steady, if not a little bit, but we were, for the most part, pretty steady, but closer to the state average in math. We were down in science and social studies, as I mentioned a while ago. We are close to maximizing points in English Language Arts in the status category and the overall student performance or student achievement categories. We are in the middle of on track, but not the top category in math, so we've got a, we've got a gap between where we're at and where we need to be as far as maximizing points in mathematics. We continue to see a significant gap between our student group data and the general population. We've had that for years. I like this, I like to think that we're narrowing that gap, but man, it's, it's just a little bit at a time that we're doing it, okay? I don't know if we'll ever get there, but, but there are some, some portions of that student group population that have seen a little bit more significant improvement. Like, for example, our English language learners, our, we're, we're into third-generation Americans in our English language group. And, and so, so many of them are doing well on, on, on the MAP test or on the E O Cs compared to what, where they used to be because their proficiency in English is a lot better than the previous generations were, okay? Let's see. Greater focus on continuous academic improvement, I already mentioned that, and then maximize success ready, we maximized our success-ready students' points for dual credit enrollment and dual credit and dual enrollment, and then for our C T E scores as well. The other section of our, of the APR is continuous improvement. I've talked about our C S I P plan already. We are, we have just completed a climate and culture survey that was distributed out, distributed out recently to, to parents, students, and staff, and we're supposed to get the results. It's a, it's a, it's a group out of Mizzou that's running that for us this year, and we're supposed to receive those results in early December for us to, to go over. Kindergarten entry assessments, we, I'll talk a little bit more about the data for that in January when I go over the balance scorecard. And then individual career and academic plans, I CAPS, we had full compliance on it, received all of our points. The only thing we got docked on continuous improvement, one point for attendance. That's where we want 90% of our students here, 90% of the time. Well, we had 86% of our students here, 90% of the time this year, so we were docked a point for that. And then required documentation to DESI. Those are, those are things that we just, that they give us a couple of points for turning those, these items in on time, so. All right. Maybe that's the end.
That's it.
That's the end, okay. Do you have any questions about the APR?
I'm just curious on the 180-day follow-up. Are you tracking how they're, the ones that are going on to secondary education, how they're faring in the college classes, whether they're having difficulties or?
No, no, we really don't survey that. Ms. Mandover in the high school sends out a Google form and, and it, all it asks are, is if they're going to college and if so, where? And if, and if they're working, and if so, where? And that's pretty much.
I think I'm curious, so just to make sure that we are preparing them for the next step on that to a degree that they can succeed.
We can, we can most certainly do that, but the problem is if we, we don't want to make that survey so long that it turns people off to filling it out.
Well, people don't fill it out anyway, and then we do phone calls, and sometimes we get none of your business, and so we can't mark anything and we lose points because they don't want to say, hey, they're working here or they're in the school. So adding that to it would probably, that'd be great information to have.
Yes, oh yeah.
But getting that information will be difficult.
From, from kids that probably don't want to have anything to do with this at that point in time anyway, yeah, it's, it's, it's tough to, tough to get a lot of that information anyway. And Amanda Osborne does a great job of retrieving that for us, like he said, like Mr. Schmidt said, if, if they don't fill out the survey, she's on the phone trying to contact families, whoever, whoever's on the contact list from last year, she will, she, she does a good job of tracking.
And I think she's got all but one so far this year.
Yes, yes. So, all right, anything else before I move on to my last thing? All right. Last month, I talked to you guys about the, about having a virtual learning program and talked about the different reasons to have that. Tonight, what I, what I'm proposing is that we enter a contract with Ed Options Academy for the rest, for the remainder of the school year, starting in January, and, and then to provide, to provide a virtual option for, for our students. The, the, the idea here is to try to recoup students initially who have transferred to another virtual program that is not ours, okay? Whether it be one of the, one of the mocap academies or, or, you know, just a private homeschool curriculum, we want to, we want to try to give them the opportunity to have a Will Springs High School diploma by the time they graduate, so. So I'm going to hand out, hand this out to you. I, I tried to send it electronically to you and it failed, but it is, it is what the administration and I have developed as far as procedures and expectations, and I apologize for the bad copy job.
You've got to remember.
I know, I know.
I don't buy any of that.
I have a couple of extras here as well, so there's a couple better ones. Here, here's another one that's.
That gets on the other street.
Anyway, wow, that got worse as it went along. I saw the first one streaked up. So anyway, there, there are three different categories, or four, I'm sorry, five, I can't count tonight, five different categories on, on our procedures and expectations, just general, you know, enrollment information, the monitoring of progress, what, what will happen, or what the, what students can do for tutoring or for extra help, and notice that it's through the virtual provider, or they could do after-school, on-campus tutoring. Then, then kind of a restriction on other information regarding on-class activities, or I'm sorry, on-campus activities. activities, or I'm sorry, on-campus activities, and then who to contact for technical assistance, which I'm going to be the point of contact on campus if, uh, they can't make contact with, uh, with Ed Options Academy. So, uh, do you, do you all have any other questions about virtual, about our virtual learning plan prior to, you know, entering our contract with, uh, Edmentum, or with, uh, with Ed Options Academy?
That's my question. Last month it was Edmentum, this month it's.
Yeah, yeah, it's the same. Ed Options Academy is the virtual academy that Edmentum runs. Yes, that's their product, is Ed Options Academy.
That's, uh, are we still there about that, what was it, 23, 2400 per student?
Yes, yeah, around two, twenty, yeah, 2,000 to 2,200, depending on what grade level they're in, and, uh, and their course load.
Is this, uh, is there enough schools doing this? And have we, have we crunched the, I mean, do we know that this is a venture that we can, a sustainable venture, you know, something that we can sustain? Is there enough information on this?
No, not really. I, I actually asked, uh, all the SCA schools, and they told, they, they told me to, uh, they told me to, uh, let them know how it goes. So, uh, there, there are other schools that are doing a version of this, but it's, uh, they are, uh, they're, the expectation is that they may come onto campus in an alternative setting, uh, rather than, uh, doing it all virtually online.
And on a contract, that's a school year, school year?
Yes, it'll be school year to school year. And, uh, one of the things, uh, that, what, what they'll do this year and probably next year is just bill us for what we use, but then on the, on year three, they may go ahead and, uh, and have a sign of contract for, uh, for, based off of our previous years and, uh, and pay upfront, but then it'll be like a gift card at that point. We'll just spend that balance down until it becomes zero, and then they'll start billing us again once we, uh, once we hit zero. So, uh, and that, that can carry over into multiple years. If, if, uh, we don't spend it by the end of that year, we can carry that balance over into the next year.
Any indication, how many students?
No, not yet, because, uh, since we, uh, since we're, uh, asking for approval for the contract tonight, uh, then, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna hopefully start, you know, this week trying to, uh, trying to recruit and, uh, and get, uh.
And by recruit, I mean, recouping students that have gone away.
Yes.
We're not wanting to try to send kids this direction.
No.
But we do want to provide an avenue for them to become, again, Willow Springs students and, and be a part of the enrollment that we have.
Absolutely.
Definitely opening that door.
Correct. Oh yeah. Yes, yes, yeah.
But the kids that are on other programs, can we now count their programs, or do they have to come to ours?
They'd have to come to ours. For, for us to, for it to count on ADA, yes.
Students that have been dismissed from school due to behaviors or whatever, are they going to be allowed to pursue this option? But will they be allowed on campus?
Is there any possibility of creating our own?
Yes, but I, I don't, I, we don't have the manpower to do this.
Right. I know, I know.
Could be in the future.
It could be, it could be. But is there a possibility that we'll pursue that?
Are you talking about developing our own curriculum and, and everything?
Yep.
How, how large of an undertaking is that?
That would be huge. That would be massive.
But there's a lot of the curriculum out there. We would, it's not like we have to reinvent the wheel.
We, we tried that during COVID to an extent, and it was.
Right, but, but there are people out there that are doing this.
There are districts that are.
Yes.
And we could investigate that.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, financially that would be, well, could be.
And that way we could pay our teachers, you know, those that are interested, and to develop this as opposed to paying Edmentum and, uh, someone else. I, I don't know, I just.
I will tell you that based on COVID, if you want teachers that are teaching full-time to do that, they will tell you no.
Sure, I understand, but, uh, perhaps there are teachers that during the summertime would like to make some extra money, uh, in starting to develop this. Uh, and there are other teachers out there besides those in our school that might work toward developing a curriculum that, that we could use. Uh, I'm just saying it's, I think it's something we ought to investigate.
Yeah, we can, we can most definitely investigate it, yeah.
So, last time you presented this, and I, I still feel, and I think it's a, a good, a good option, and it's something that, I mean, this is the way it's moving, but you've, you've now made me a little bit nervy here, saying that no other schools are doing this, and we don't really know the financial.
No.
You know, like, are we sure we know where this is headed? Or, that's what, that's what I'm asking, is you're asking us to vote on it tonight.
Yes.
Last, last month I was pretty excited, looking forward to it, but you've got, you've got me kind of on my heels.
What's, what's your concern?
Well, I ask you if any other schools were doing this where we could draw some conclusions, whether it was going to be cost-effective for us to, to take that or not. You said that we didn't have any, they were waiting to see what we did.
Yeah, in, in, in the conference.
Right, right.
And I didn't, I didn't go outside the conference to ask.
Right, so my concern is, is that we're under some pretty big financial strains, and for us to vote and approve this and put it into place in January without, like, I'm not 100% sure now that we have a real clear, have, have we looked at this financially? Do we know?
Chris, what's, what's it cost if you have?
If, if, for a full-time student in, uh, for a full-time student in high school, for example, or middle school, uh, we're looking about $4,000 for the year.
And that's what we will get?
And, and that's, that's doing a full eight-block.
And that's at that 95%.
Yeah, well.
On the virtual.
And we're only paying for students that we enroll.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we are controlling what we have, you know, like.
Right, so there's a, there's a fail-safe in there that tells us that we're not going to get, we're not going to start in January.
We're not going to go bullups. We're not going to, we're not going to lose money off of this.
Right. I just don't want to invest and go that direction unless we're sure that this is going to.
And this is to help us recoup the enrollment, right?
Correct.
I mean, it's, it's nothing to encourage kids to do this.
No.
If they're going to, they're going to do it one way or the other, right?
Right.
And then it just gives us.
We might as well be good here, yeah.
Yes, yeah. So, and, and, and like I said last month, we value seated education here. I mean, we have data that, uh, that backs up, uh, that virtual students don't score as well on the MAP or EOC as students who are in seated classes. Uh, so, so, you know, it's, uh, we, we still want kids here. Uh, we still want kids to collaborate and, and, uh, you know, have that face-to-face interaction with teachers and other students. Uh, you know, I, I don't think we accomplish those goals by, by, uh, by telling, by encouraging kids to, uh, go to seated instruction. I'm sorry, to, I'm not sorry, sorry, to, uh, virtual instruction, so.
This contract now, is this going to be from January to May?
To May, and then we will renew it.
Is there going to be enough that, that in just that few months to kind of move, prompt it to fall in?
We can reexamine it then. I, to answer your question, Adam, I really, I really don't know.
I don't worry, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Do we know how many stipulations that we actually lost to virtual schools this year, last year?
Uh, you guys, you, uh.
Number five.
No, I can't, I can't, I can't recall off the top of my head.
We did at one point. There are, there is a number, but I couldn't.
I mean, our overall enrollment, our overall enrollment this year, I can tell you versus in 2024, uh, I'm sorry, in the, yeah, 2024, 25 school year at the end of September, is down 100 students, so.
But not all those went to virtual. Some moved, some went.
Right.
Homeschool.
Says 2,400 is a motion for the kid.
Mm-hmm.
And I think wasn't there, was it after?
Four, uh, 4,000 for middle, high school, and then it'd be about.
Is what it costs.
4,200, 4,400 for elementary.
Is that per year or semester?
That would be, uh, the, the high number I'm giving is for the year.
Okay, so isn't there some, when there's some provision there too, that you had so long, uh, you had like two weeks or whatever?
Yes.
Before you got charged?
Yeah, four, two days, yeah.
And that's why on his plan there, those checks, where it says three days, seven days, 10 days would be very important.
Okay, so just before I vote on this here, so, and I don't want to have to table this because I don't understand it, I want to, I want to, you guys, we are going to get, we are going to pay $4,000 a semester for a student to take online learning.
A year.
A year, I'm sorry, a year. And then we're going to get, what, $7,000 or something from the state, $7,200 from the state?
Correct.
Correct, to educate that student.
Correct.
So they need to know.
Yeah.
Also, if, will their MAP tests and EOC scores go towards our performance?
Yes, they will. Yeah, we are responsible for them. They are a Willow Springs student, yes, their MAP and EOC scores will be ours.
So a non-productive online student could be, could pull down the numbers pretty hard.
Yeah, yes, very much so.
That's why we have.
Yeah.
Developing relationships.
We want them to be on, yeah.
Well, I would say that that's probably why schools aren't diving real hard off into this, because they have no control of the education, but they're, they're going to take the numbers and their, and on how they, they do that, so that's probably, they're wondering to see how this plays out.
Now, what about a senior that's online? Do they still do the senior projects?
Uh, that's, that would be part of the new plan. Yeah, going forward.
Good question. And since you brought it up, I didn't get a chance to ask you what your thoughts were for the.
Oh, I like that.
Cap project.
I like that.
Because you're the student rep, we probably should have asked you what your thoughts were.
And that's, and that's a good question on the, on the seniors, if we, you know, if we expect them to do, like, if, we, we could use an internship class as part of their schedule, so a senior could actually be less than the 2,000 per semester that we had talked about.
And would it provide any hotspots, nothing like that?
No, no.
If he does, they're, they're.
They're on their own.
That's, yeah, that's one of the general expectations on the, on the list, is that students who are, are, as students, their families are responsible for their devices and their internet access. If they want to do it that bad, they're going to have to provide something.
Do you see any financial downside or anything?
No, I think what these guys are trying to tell you is if they do this online learning, and we provide that, we can count them, as long as they're online working every day, we can count them as a seated student. And the way the formula works right now is if we get them on there 100% of the time, those minutes count for everything, uh, they're paying on the, the formula, they're going to pay a 71.45 on the formula this year. So that's what they're trying to tell you right now, versus if they go to lunch or somewhere like that, we don't get to count them. We pay the money, and we don't get to count them as our kids on attendance. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right.
All right. Anything else? Thank you.
We're trying to go.
I don't know if I am. I'm, I'm wait, I'm waiting for you to dismiss me here.
Thank you.
From this meeting.
Okay, last thing I have is, uh, school board filing dates. You need to approve that this evening, um, and I have up there the 8th, but I think it's the 9th. The 9th through the 30th, um, interested parties will do that at the central office. Mrs. Scarborough will take that information. There are three open seats for three-year terms, and that'll open up on December 9th.
All right. Comments from guests?
Thank you. Uh, just a comment on the, on this presentation, um, that you just gave. I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Um, two things, can a student do a virtual online course if, if they're getting ready to graduate, or, and they've done, you know, semi-okay, but they haven't done well in math, for example, could they take a math course from this program, um, in order to bring their grade up so that they could graduate?
If they are lacking credits in mathematics, yes, they can, they can take any, any core course, uh, that's, uh, that.
Virtually.
Virtually, and they can, uh, they, they can take pretty much any course we.
If you have.
It doesn't have to be full-time.
No, if you have, uh, questions, feel free to come in and say doctor's experience. Otherwise, we've, we've got to keep it comments here.
Okay. Uh, my comment on that is whenever my students did virtual and I taught college, they didn't, they weren't as successful.
Right. Yeah.
I'm a little concerned about that. The other thing is, um, the Federal Department of Education has been disbanded. Have, fiscally, have, has there, have you seen a difference in the amount of money you're receiving?
Not yet, I don't, not yet.
But that's true, yeah. We're keeping an eye on it for sure.
All right. Um, we'll move on to items for action here. Um, on the, uh, first of their policy agreement, are we approving these policy amendments?
No, it's just the, you must approve the policy update as presented.
Update as presented, okay. So a motion would be in order to approve the policy update as presented.
So move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And, uh, a motion would be in order to approve this comprehensive school improvement plan as presented.
So move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And a motion would be in order to approve the, uh, offering of, uh, the Edmentum classes, the, uh, what's it called?
Virtual.
Ed options.
Ed options.
Academy.
I would say you might want to present that, it's just offer virtual learning, that gives us flexibility on vendors in the future, and not locking it into just strictly Edmentum. Make two cents.
All right, uh, to approve the offering of a local virtual learning option.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
And you don't have, um, your iPad for some reason, but we need to approve the school board filing dates.
Right, uh, so a motion would be in order to approve December 9th to.
30th.
December 30th as the open dates for filing for school board.
That, that is a Tuesday. Okay, it's not.
Is that correct? Is it the?
I've got the 8th as a Monday.
It's the 9th, December 9th is the period. I don't know what date that's on.
It's a Tuesday.
Okay.
That's why.
Yep.
That's right.
So 9th through 30th.